Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose name we're liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Alderman Tilvin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Approval minutes.
You have November 4th, 2024, please.
Motion by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
We have a request to rezone 40-50 Dulson Avenue.
To send it to committee?
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it for this evening, sir.
Okay, for the good of the city, I would like to call up Ray Lynn and her team again. Do you have a special announcement?
I know you don't want to hear from us again.
I can start over.
Let's run that back, please. We're going to bring up the most important people who attend our programs and here Nikki will explain where they went and their speeches that they delivered. We thought it was very important for the council and the community to hear these incredible speeches that these are youth, some of our youth that attend our programs, delivered at an event.
Hello again, everybody. So, we attended the Orange County Youth Bureau's annual youth summit for programs that are funded and made possible through the Orange County Youth Bureau. Our Middletown Recreation Young Warriors Boxing Program, which is led by Coach Paco, who I believe is here tonight, is back there. We recognized two of our fighters, Joshua and Isaac. They were recognized that evening, as well as spoke on the importance of the program, what the program means to them, and they are going to come up and share their words again. So you guys are just going to share with you.
Hello, my name is Joshua. I'm a part of the Young Warriors Boxing Team. Because of the Young Warriors Boxing Team, every day after school I have a place to go. And because of them, I'm able to chase my dream every day. Without them and their free program, I wouldn't have ever had a place to start boxing. I don't know where I would be without Coach Paco and everyone at the rec center. Because of them, I won the Hudson Valley Youth Championship. And they teach me discipline, hard work, they give me a place to go, they keep me off the street, and I'm very thankful for them and everything they do for me, because they do so much for me every day.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Isaac Rodriguez, and I just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful to be here. And boxing is really important in my life. Boxing has helped me be healthy. I think we all have seen boxers, how they are healthy, they're always in great shape, and boxing helped me get in shape. I lost weight doing boxing, and once I started competing, I lost even more weight. With competition, it showed me hard work and discipline. Being in the gym every day is not something that is easy, but I love doing it. I love boxing, it's my passion. I was able to win these two belts. Right now, I am 3-0 in amateurs, and I'm hoping to win more. And I also just want to say boxing is really important to me, because it also helped me stay away from bad influences. There's a lot of bad on the street, a lot of people do bad stuff, and unfortunately, some of our friends have gone through that. But what's the reason? Why do they keep doing it? It's because they don't have a reason to fight for it. I have a dream, and I want to become world champion. I want to make my family proud, and boxing has helped there. Boxing has been there for me. And I just want to say thank you. And boxing is really important to me, and I hope you guys keep funding this. Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Salinas Rodriguez.
We have two young youth fitness participants, Ethan Narcage and Denziah Martinez.
Hello, my name is Ethan. I am seven years old. I have participated in many programs at the Middletown Recreation Department until three years old. Some programs include soccer, basketball, winter recess, and summer camp. I enjoy summer camp because I get to learn new skills and make friends. My favorite sports are soccer, basketball, and flag football. I appreciate these programs, thank you.
Good job.
Good evening, my name is Denziah Martinez. I am a seventh grader at Twin Towers Middle School in Middletown, where I am a student in the enrichment program. I have been involved with the programs at the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department for about three years now. Being able to attend the programs that they offer has been a great experience for me. It helps me to grow as an athlete and keeps me active all year long. I play flag football and modified tackle football for my school, and plan to try out for modified basketball teams soon. I attend many programs at the recreation center during the year on Monday and Wednesday nights. I go to the youth fitness open gym. I really like staying active and busy, and all of these programs let me do that. Again, thank you all, have a great night.
And this is what it's all about. You heard from us, the workers, but hearing from the youth is what it's all about. If it didn't start bringing the tear to your eye, then I don't know. But these youth are amazing, we love that they come back year after year, and this is why we do it. And if I could just have all the council members come up, so we could take a picture inside with the youth.
Well, I introduced the resolution to the council and proposed an agenda item, and it's based on, well, you can see all the whereas's in the resolution and the resolves. But what was curious to me is that, that's my proposal to the common council. The common council hasn't voted yet on this, on this resolution. Yet, we were bombarded with emails from Mr. Frischberg and his consultants to change the plan. And that sort of confused me. So, after reviewing what was sent and the requests that were sent, you know, I only reinforced the fact that the resolution is correct. Because, you know, when we review a document, and, you know, as you know, the zoning board of appeals approved the area variance, whether we agreed with it or not, they did. But the planning board rejected the application or made a negative referral to the common council, maybe not reject might be the wrong word. So when we review these plans, we determine whether the plan was an acceptable subdivision. But now, the applicant is changing or attempting to change the subdivision after the public hearing has been closed. And I think that is inappropriate in and of itself. So, it's up to this council to determine whether the original plan and/or the amended plan, if they so choose, significantly changes the nature of the original, or the amended plan changes the original application, whether it identifies, whether the amendment complies with applicable laws and regulations, and we don't know that by what Mr. Frischberg submitted through his consultant. What we do know is that they submitted a new site plan via email, at least that's what I got, that has no property dimensions on it. It states in the summary that lots one, two, and three have been changed, the length and depth of the homes has been changed, removal of retaining wall, or walls, I think it was wall, and its proposed grading changes. Mr. Frischberg, in the submissions, acknowledges that the 11-foot wall was not in a good fit for the neighborhood, and said that it was important to maintain the aesthetics and characteristics of the neighborhood, and therefore, they are now submitting this amended plan. So they're agreeing with my resolution that I submitted to the council to deny the original application. They're saying it right in their own consultant's report, we acknowledge that an 11-foot wall does not fit into the characteristics and aesthetics of that neighborhood. They do cite other properties in the neighborhood that have terraced walls, it's hard to make out in some of the pictures, but from what I was able to ascertain by looking at Google, was it looked like most of them were within four-foot compliance, but were terraced. You know, four-foot wall, then maybe 10 feet, 15 feet, and then another four-foot wall, not an 11-foot wall. I think it all changes the flow, the drainage, when you start removing walls, and all of those things will take time to review. But I think the most important part, too, is also that the public hearing has been closed. How would the public now have an opportunity to comment on the plan that was being submitted today, or at least within the last couple days, by Mr. Frischberg? And if they do comment, it's not part of the public hearing record, I guess you can still consider their comments, but the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to come and comment on a proposal that's being presented to the common council. And that proposal now, by virtue, at least in my thoughts, of him submitting an amended plan, he's acknowledging that the original plan was deficient. So, there are no secret on these new changes that have been filed. There are, it's a process that he's trying to circumvent, the process of going back through the beginning of this, through the planning board, and back to the common council if necessary. But it's, I think it's inappropriate for the council to consider this amended plan. I think it's important that you consider and hopefully support the resolution that I proposed. I know I worked very closely with Alderman Johnson and Alderwoman Ray on this for several months. I know the neighbors have been very frustrated about the length of time this whole process has taken, but I think in the end, we have come up with a reasonable resolution, and that reasonableness was acknowledged by the very applicants themselves through their attorney. So I would ask that you deny the application this evening, and reject the application for the subdivision, and then we'll move on from that, and the applicant has the opportunity to proceed at whatever course they feel is necessary. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be more than happy to take them. Any questions for the mayor? Alderman Johnson.
Are we going to have discussion with the resolution, or can we have discussion now?
We'll have discussion with the resolution.
All right, then I don't have any questions, I have comments. I'll wait. Thank you.
Anyone from Orange Terrace would like to come up? No, just Orange Terrace residents first. Mr. Frischberg?
Thanks.
No, 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 we have residents first.
Good evening, my name is Peter Broker. I live on 27 Orange Terrace, and I've been coming here for the last two years with this project. It's unfortunate, you know, it's unreasonable for this to take this long, not fair to us, the neighborhood, not fair to the contractor. I'm glad to see it came down from six houses to four houses, but I'm still, or the neighbors are still not satisfied with that. We all had to build on 75-foot lots or greater. Most of our homes are on 100-foot lots, and we had to go through additional expenses to make that happen, but we followed the law. There was 75 feet minimum, and that was it, that was the end of it. I hope you vote against this project. It really would destroy the neighborhood if you don't. You also need to consider Clinton Street, which is a street that has all 50-foot lots, about 18 or 20 of them. If you make an exception here, what are you going to do when someone wants to build on Clinton Street? You're going to have to make an exception there. We already have one contractor buying lots, 50-foot lots, but every other one, he puts under a different name. So you know what he's up to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Louis Villafane, I live at 19 Orange Terrace, and I am totally confused today by this new change, and all I know is they constantly bring, they want to keep it in character with the neighborhood. They bring the entire neighborhood, okay? I live on Orange Terrace, and all the people on Orange Terrace are the ones that are going to be affected by this, these changes here. And if you would go to Orange Terrace, you would see that the majority of homes are on 75-foot or greater. I believe there might be three that are on 50-foot lots. And back in, when I, I've been there 32 years, when I purchased that property, the builder was Jack Stack, and he was one of them that was forced to abide by the law and that rule. And also, my neighbor Pete was forced to abide by that rule. So I believe that everybody should be abide by that rule. And again, keep it in character. That is not in character with the neighborhood. Again, we are running out of space here, and every little slot that they built, that they could purchase, they want to build. How much more can you build? Okay? We don't need all those slots. Keep it in character with the actual block. And again, abide by the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maria Jetchamlong, I live at 2 Clinton Street. I've been there 21 years, and I was one that was also forced to build on 75-foot lot. I agree with what Louis and Pete said, enough is enough, you know, follow the rules, that's all we want, is just follow what everyone else had to do. There's only two or three homes on Orange Terrace that are on 50-foot lots. Everything else is 75. I don't care what's on State Street, I care what's on Clinton Street and Orange Terrace. We care about what's, how it's going to affect that part of the neighborhood. It's a little piece of heaven where we don't have so much traffic, and all the kids are playing out there. You're going to bring six more homes, it's just going to be too much traffic, not to mention how the garbage trucks have to come in and out, and they go backwards, they can't even turn around and make a proper U-turn. And also, it's a little ridiculous how, you know, the zoning board already approved them for four lots. Now, at the last minute, you want to switch it back to six? You keep doing this. You start at six, we get you down to four, then you go back to six, then you go back to four. We're going to have another two years of this nonsense going on again? I mean, it's not fair. You know, build the homes, just follow the rules, just like everybody else did. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Frischberg.
Neil D. Frischberg, Fabricant Lieutenant Frischberg, for the applicant. So I'll work backwards. Three people who came up told us to follow the rules. We did follow the rules. We applied to the zoning board of appeals, as per the rules. We complied with the rules. The zoning board of appeals, after numerous people, including the people who just testified here, or stated here, gave us a four-lot subdivision. They gave us a three-foot variance for each lot, so we could have one more house. We're not seeking four, six houses, we're seeking one additional house, that's it. For those who claim that, well, I had to build on 75 feet, so do you. That's why we have variance laws, and if you wanted to apply for a variance, you could have. So we followed the rules, we followed the law, we did exactly what we were supposed to do with, according to the City of Middletown's codes, rules, and regulations. We also did exactly what the City of Middletown asked us to do with the planning board, we complied with every request by the CPL. The planning board did not refer this to the common council until it was satisfied that we would comply with every request by the CPL. The common council gets the final say in this. During the back and forth, there is a memo from Mr. Moore from 10/14/2024, which mentions the 11-foot retaining wall, which is the only issue this council has in the proposal from Mayor DiStefano. Nothing else, just a retaining wall, that's it. There is nothing else, no other problems, nothing about traffic, nothing about drainage, nothing else, just a retaining wall. So, generally, retaining walls are determined when the property is being built. You could issue a positive, an approval, subject to the retaining wall being subject to engineering issues, because that is the only issue that this council, that this proposal, that the mayor himself has said that. So, and, but the mayor says, and we don't agree, by the way, that our correspondents conceded that the retaining wall is unacceptable and unreasonable, has an unacceptable and unreasonable impact on the neighborhood. In fact, that was never, ever brought up in any of the correspondents. The only thing that engineer Moore suggested is that maybe it requires specific engineering by an engineer. Well, guess what? That's who Al Fusco is. So we don't agree with the mayor about our correspondence, we don't agree with his interpretation. In fact, he's dead wrong. So, I understand that Ms. Ray doesn't want this project, Dr. Johnson doesn't want this project. I get it, because your constituents don't want the project, but guess what? You have to follow the law. The law says mob mentality doesn't rule. The law requires you to look at your own code and ask yourself if we satisfied it, and we did. We satisfied everything in your code, we satisfied everything the CPL wanted. At the last minute, because this is, for the first time, the retaining wall had an unreasonable and unacceptable aesthetic impact on the neighborhood, so, we resolved it. You're going to, if we knew about it beforehand, we would have submitted a four-foot retaining wall, but no one asked us to. No one said, please submit plans with a smaller retaining wall. Had they asked us to do that, we would have done so. So Mayor DiStefano's claimed that the public didn't have an opportunity to look at it. The public hearing was closed after we got the 10/14 memo, and we never had noticed that it was unreasonable and unacceptable, had an unreasonable and unacceptable aesthetic impact on the neighborhood for a wall that is at least 20 feet from the property lines. No one told us that. So yes, I do think you should consider the plans that came in, because we never had noticed that it was unacceptable and unreasonable aesthetic impact. There's not a single document that goes back and forth regarding that. This is just a canard, and I say this with due respect to the mayor. It is a canard because he doesn't like the ZBA decision. He doesn't like the fact that we come in here entitled to four lots. He doesn't like the fact that the ZBA granted our area variance, and this is just a canard to prevent us from having a four-lot subdivision where we complied with all the engineering issues. So, I put it to the common council. Do one of two things. Vote on the matter based upon the plans that were submitted with a four-foot retaining wall, since it now has resolved the mayor's concerns, or two, adjourn the matter to the Send our plans out to the public, let them comment all they want on the limited issue of the four-foot retaining wall, because that's all that's different. Everything else has been complied with. The lot sizes are the same, the grading is the same, there's no difference. So, we understand that you only, you had 62 days from the close of the public hearing to render a decision. We've already agreed in my letter to extend it until December 24th. That's okay with us. But no one is being shirked of process. My client is a constituent of Alderman Ray and Alderman Johnson, just like their other constituents. He owns property there, he's asking for one extra house. He's entitled to three. And the only thing that's causing the mayor to have a problem with this is a retaining wall. And I guarantee you, if I look through the annals of all the approvals, of all the denials that you've made, there is not a single denial based upon a height of a retaining wall. Thank you.
Come on, let the mayor. Well, really no need to respond to everything Mr. Frischberg said, because a lot of it is BS, and the entitlement issue certainly is one of them. But he says no one asked them. It's not our job as a city council, or my job as mayor, to do the planning for Mr. Frischberg and his clients. And it's also not my job to come up here and tell you, make a representation to you of what Mr. Frischberg's consultant said. What I would like to do is submit to the council a letter dated December 2nd from Fusco Engineering Land Surveying, and I'll quote part of, I'll read the letter, because it's not that long, because it's basically some of the things that I outlined in my presentation. This letter, dear common council members, this letter is regarding the denial of the requested subdivision of the Orange Terrace. Our firm has revised the site plan to reflect the following changes. Lots one, two, and three have been revised. The proposed single-family dwelling depth has been reduced from 28 feet to 24 feet. The length of the dwelling has been increased from 32 to 36. Item two, lot three, retaining wall has been removed. Proposed grading now reflects the change. Lot three, number three, lot one and two, the dwelling units were moved forward towards the house, towards the front setback line, therefore decreasing the height requirements for the ingress of the rear of the property. Item four, the retaining wall located along the rear of the property for lot one and two has been revised to a maximum of four feet high. Item five, the retaining wall along the right side of lot one has been eliminated. Now, here comes the line that Mr. Frischberg objected to. Our firm, and now this is the consultant for the applicant, that, and these documents are presented to us on behalf of Mr. Frischberg also. Our firm understands the importance of maintaining the aesthetics and characteristics of the neighborhood. We have revised the plan to minimize the impact of the neighborhood, on the neighboring community. We have minimized the cut-and-fill requirements in the area of disturbances to help balance the site. And then he goes on talking about the multiple properties that he claims have four-foot walls and other terraced walls. walls and other terrace walls. So it's not my representation that Mr. Frischberg, through his consultant, was agreeing with the resolution that I had proposed to the common council. That was his consultant. Also, there's an expectation I also would like to submit to the council, the site plan that was presented. You look at the site plan, there's no dimensions of lot sizes. There's no representation about what has been changed. There's no drainage, at least from what I can determine as a layperson. All this will require our engineers to review, go through the secret process if necessary, have more public input and opportunities for public input. I didn't ask Mr. Frischberg to come here tonight and change the resolution. I didn't ask him to submit an alternate resolution. He did that on his own. You very well could have voted down my proposal. And then had a resolution from the floor approving his proposal. He's the one that acknowledged at every step so far that what they presented had a problem. It's in both of these documents. So he can move on and do corrections or whatever he needs to do. But in regards to the application or the resolution that's in front of you, I would hope the council would reject it and then send this project back if they so desire. They have the right, and I know people will not like to hear this, they do have the right to go back and apply again at the planning board. But then our engineers will then have an opportunity to review the site plan that's being presented. Unless he can show me on this site plan that you presented, Mr. Frischberg, can you tell me how big these lots are? Can you tell me the width of the lot? I'm asking about the document.
They're the same-sized lots that were presented to this board for the last five months. They haven't changed in size.
Okay. Well, this document, this document does not reflect any dimensions whatsoever.
They haven't changed one inch.
Okay, you don't want to answer the question.
They didn't change one inch.
You don't want to answer the question. On this document, show me the dimensions of this lot, all four of these lots, on the document you submitted to the common council. It's not there. And that's why you don't want to answer the question. So I'll present this to the common council. The decision is yours, of course, and we can move on to the next order of business.
Thank you. We'll move over for the good of the city now. I'll open it up for the good of the city. Everybody will have a chance to speak. Please state your name, where you're from. You have three minutes. Come up. If I hear people booing or saying comments, the public conference will be over. We will not have public comments again. So please be respectful to everybody. You have your three minutes, and go from there.
All right. Hard to top all that. But good evening. My name is Jason, and I live in Middletown. What do Newburgh, Beacon, Kingston, New Paltz, and my city have in common? Each are within Pat Ryan's congressional district. What don't they have in common? Middletown is the only municipality among them that hasn't passed a ceasefire resolution, despite this being the eighth meeting in a row where community members have gathered to urge you to pass one. Grassroots advocacy is about building from the bottom up, and that's why we're here. It's the only way to counteract money in politics. Our efforts are now paying off, as evidenced by Pat Ryan's recent reversal of his vote on H.R. 9495, a bill that would give Trump unlimited power to dismantle nonprofits that he disagrees with. It is unusual for Pat Ryan to respond to his constituents on a Palestine-related issue, and it's a sign that the growing pressure on him is working. Middletown is the missing puzzle piece to create pressure for a congressman to change his stance. Understanding this, to suggest that individuals speaking from neighboring towns are "hijacking" the meeting is a mischaracterization. The reality is that people are being inspired to take action and join the conversation. Hudson Valley and Middletown residents alike are uniting on this front. Contrary to the claim that no new information is being shared at each meeting, we've consistently returned to debunk narratives aimed at undermining our ceasefire efforts. We've corrected the falsehood that our movement is organized through the DSA rather than being a community movement. We've proven wrong, the argument that this council lacks the authority to speak on global issues, and each of you have demonstrated this by passing a resolution for global peace. When folks have misspoke, we've clarified misinformation about Middletown's tax dollars, ensuring that our community has accurate information about our federal tax dollars. Tonight, Zionists may try to distract us by bringing up Hamas, but Israel is not looking for Hamas in tunnels. They're bombing Palestinian schools, homes, and hospitals. They're not looking for Hamas. They're cutting down olive trees in the West Bank and burning farmland, books, and food. They're not looking for Hamas. They're starving 1.8 million people at once in an open-air prison. Being that you're all Democrat, I can't understand why you wouldn't support us in our efforts. A year from now, when we look back on our efforts, think about how you will be remembered. What's happening in Palestine will follow all of us for the rest of our lives. So it is my hope that you will find it within yourselves to uplift our community's voice. Thank you for your time and consideration. And again, we do appreciate you passing a resolution calling for global peace and the release of hostages. We are now asking you to take the next step and pass a resolution with verbiage calling for a ceasefire. Do it for your constituents, do it for Palestinians, do it for Israelis, do it for us. Thank you.
I just wanted to start by saying, it's my first council meeting, and coming in early, being part of the community, and seeing all that is done for our children was very inspiring. I should have come some more before this. I wrote something, so I'll just read it. Mayor DiStefano, and esteemed council members of Middletown City Council, I come before you with respect for your time and concerns of our community. As a homeowner and a proud resident of Middletown, I strongly urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution. Our city is in a unique position to join neighboring communities in leading this honorable charge. Cause, sorry. I have faith in this council, and especially in Mayor DiStefano. I've seen firsthand your passion for unity, for community, and empowering our youth. Passion that has already made a significant impact, not only in our community, but in the future world. As an informed citizen, I believe passing this resolution will not only align us with global efforts for peace, but also redirect resources into local, meaningful projects. Charity starts at home. And it's time we focus on investing in our communities rather than sending federal tax-paying dollars elsewhere for causes that don't align with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Malad. I'm a Palestinian American who made home in Middletown. I want to express my gratitude to those who uphold the tradition of allowing public comments in your city council meeting, as this embodies the true spirit of democracy in America. After the last meeting, I had a chance to speak with Masih, who honestly answered the question, "If we fill the room with Middletown residents that supports our cause, would it make a change in your mind?" He said not only no, but he also mentioned the difficulty of getting five city council members to support us. It is important to us to maintain an open mind in order to appreciate various perspectives and be ready to adjust our approach when necessary. I want to explain ourselves in a different way, because I have heard some of you mentioned that only about 100 communities in the U.S. have passed ceasefire resolution, and thousands others have not been addressed. If you want to build a brick fence, you start with the first row, then the second, third, and so on. You did not skip to the 10th row and expect it to stand. We chose your councillor because Middletown residents aspire to spark a chain reaction, encouraging other cities and towns to join us in advocating for a ceasefire resolution. At first, we thought, at first I thought the U.S. current administration was complicit with the genocide. But I come to understand that we are, in fact, playing a significant role in the genocide. History reveals the millions we have murdered throughout our relatively short existence, often without compassion. One example that shocked me the most, when the Secretary of State, Madeleine Albright, responded yes to the question regarding the death of half a million Iraqi children. Due to the sanction, she was asked, "Is the price worth it?" At the end of our, at the end of our brief three minutes, I have been given to discuss the 76 years painful occupation and suffering we have endured. I would like to share a deeply personal story. On my father's deathbed, he held on to the key of our home in Palestine. A place was taken away from us with such determination. Even when he closed his eyes for the final time, he refused to let go of that key. Powerful symbol of our roots, of our lost roots, and love for the place that remains forever in our heart. While many Israeli settlers have left their fantasy home, returned to their original land. If, and the big if, Israel prevails, it indicates we are heading toward a larger conflict along with the potential, potential for stealing more land from neighboring country. This war between evil and good, injustice and justice, darkness and humanity, colonization and liberalization. When people seek righteousness, righteous life, faith will answer, the night will end, and the chain will be shattered. Thank you.
My name's Adam, and Adam Byrne, and this is my city. I'm sure I've told you, well, I might not have, but I've been an uncle for about a year and a half now. And it's so exciting whenever my niece and nephew, Dante and Freya, come to visit from New Jersey. They're like these little people who experience the world for the first time. It's so incredible to see them eat blueberries and wheel around in their little toy scooters. And it's like, everything is so new to them. You don't, you don't get to see that with adults, but with little kids, it's like, you see the wonder in their eyes, and their faces light up when you play peek-a-boo. The little ones really little, so it's like that. Whenever I go on my phone, though, I see these like, I see these families crying out to me from the other side of the internet. And it's really disheartening. I get to have, I get to have fun weekends with my niece and nephew, because they're still alive. A lot of Palestinian children are searing piles of flesh. It's not a great situation, and we are, and our tax dollars are complicit in that. We don't, we don't have to be. We're not saying you have any sway in the transfer of federal funds. We are saying that you could, you could just say that you want it to stop. Because that's, on an individual level, what I know you would all be willing to do. You, I know you all want this to stop. Each and every one of you. And you can make it happen. I believe that. Thank you.
My name's Adnan Azghair. I'm a proud Palestinian, Orange County, community member. I'm here to speak of the voice of the voiceless. I'm here to represent the 60,000 children who were murdered by Israel, and the thousands of kids who no longer have a shoulder to cry on. The children whose family members have been abducted who cry alone. The children of family members who are still stuck under rubble, maybe dead or maybe injured. I'm here to represent the kids that are starving to death due to Israel's war crimes. None of these atrocities will be possible to take place without our tax dollars. I know to you, you might think that Middletown calling for a ceasefire won't do, won't do change anything, won't change anything or do anything for, do anything to help. But I'd like you to understand that it takes small steps to lead to the bigger steps, and that we are desperate to help stop the killing that are being funded by our tax dollars. We are desperate for the Biden administration to start listening to what our people want. Hand in hand, we can all put some pressure on the government to stop sending our tax dollars and to call for immediate ceasefire. This wouldn't be an issue that we would come present in our local city halls if we weren't funding it. But since Middletown's tax dollars are contributing to the genocide, it is also a Middletown issue. The way I see it, you guys are all here as congressmen and women, but when you leave from here, you are fathers, sons, mothers, and daughters, people who value family. So please, understand, we value our families as well. I understand that your job is to take care of the people of Middletown, while unfortunately, the people of Middletown are contributing hundreds of thousands of their tax dollars unwillingly to help fund this genocide. Nothing justifies killing 60,000 kids, not self-defense or human shields as they claim. Nothing justifies a loss of a life of a child. I believe that even after months of devastation, the future can be brighter, and that if humanity rises up, we can help save my brothers and sisters in Gaza. I desperately and kindly ask you to support the community's resolution of a ceasefire in Gaza. We need an immediate and permanent ceasefire. There has never been a country who refers to themselves as democratic, yet kills 150,000 civilians. There was never a civilized nation that targets kids. Would a democratic country say things like, "No Palestinian children are innocent," and refers to us as human animals? How is it possible that a country who believes in rights, freedoms, and justice for all needs to be convinced that killing children is not okay? If my grandparents didn't seek refuge in 1948 during the Nakbe, I'd be a kid in Gaza suffering like these children are, waiting, waiting on adults overseas to see if the bombs should end or not, while other adults call it self-defense. I hope, I hope you guys choose to be on the right side of history. I'd like to end it off with a quote by Malcolm X. "If you're not careful, the newspaper will have you hating the people that are being oppressed and loving the people that are doing the oppression." 60,000 children dead. Thank you.
That's a low example. She thinks she's special. She just cut the line and stands right there.
We have three minutes to go. I don't have to end this. Point of order. Stop it right now.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Jairo Perez. I'm a community organizer here at For the Money. And I live here in Middletown on Houston, and I've been living here for 20 years. And first off, I wanted to thank you for the work that's being done towards good cause eviction. As you could tell, I'm here to speak in support of good cause eviction. And we need good cause eviction to protect against the unfair evictions and the predatory rent hikes. I'm also speaking on behalf of members who couldn't be here tonight, because they're working late to afford their rent, let alone the rising costs of groceries and utilities. If people pay their rent and abide by their leases, then they should be able to stay in their homes without the rent hikes and unjust evictions. I also call on you to set the portfolio size to one unit exemption, to cover as many tenants as possible. Middletown is on the up, and I'm proud to be from here. I hope that other families get to grow here and aren't pushed out and enjoy the great things, such as the parking wreck here in our city. Also, voice my support for the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Berkman, lifelong Middletown resident, and I just am here to express my gratitude and appreciation for everyone on the common council. It's like we're going through quite an ordeal. And a lot of people are not from Middletown that feel compelled to come to our community and to express their priorities, which may or may not be our priorities. I expect not. I mean, I could go on and try to express my disagreement with what others have called facts and the numbers, you know, but I'm not going to do that today, because I've thought all along that this is not the forum for a discussion of foreign policy. You can mention it, I'm not, you know, it's a free country. And people can go to their elected representatives with their ideas. But it seems to be a pattern where we have, I think this is the ninth time in a row. And I remember, I was quite impressed with some of the comments that some Alderman made last meeting, where he was saying that you've considered, listened to what they had to say, considered what they had to say, wrote your own resolution, and passed a resolution. Under normal circumstances, we would think that would be case closed. But that's not anything, it's far from it right now. I heard a few speakers, got here early last time, because we, the lines stopped short last time. But, pardon me. But I didn't hear, I heard the word hostages once. If we have a sincere effort for healing and for doing the right thing, ceasefire is certainly an appropriate thing to discuss if you have the right forum. But so is freeing the hostages. To me, there's like a selective consciousness about what is important. So I'm hoping that you'll withstand whatever tidal wave of pressure that is placed So I'm hoping that you'll withstand whatever tidal wave of pressure that is placed upon you. And I think that you're up for a job, and that's why I'm here to say thank you. All right?
My name is Nati Fuchs, and I live in, um, in the area Middletown and Gosson for more than 30, 30 years. Uh, I, 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 I'm going to jump a little bit. I, I'll try to do it fast, but I want to respond to all these people, what they said last week and this week. I want to try, I want to start with the fact that they say ceasefire, ceasefire. And the fact is that as soon as they bring the hostages back, they know that in one second after that, it will be a ceasefire. They don't talk about them. They, they just don't talk about the fact that six of them survived a whole year, and they were murdered in cold blood. Two of them just found out that the American and the, the American citizen who were just killed in cold blood. I, um, they talk about your taxpayer. Your taxpayer who gave so much money to, to Gaza and to the West Bank and whatever, to build hospitals, to build, to build schools, to, to do all good things for Gaza, to, to build places to work. They took this money and they used it to build tunnels. Miles and miles and miles of tunnels that is, is full of weapon. And why? Just so on October 7th, they came to our houses, to our neighbor, to, 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 to all the kibbutzim, and they killed and murdered, and they raped. They, they cut their, they, they cut their bodies. They, they cut, they, they put babies in the oven while they're raping the woman and, and the, the husband is watching it. What do you want the government do? If they did it in your neighborhood? They did, they, they killed 15,000 of young people who just wanted to dance in, 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 in a music festival. That's what they wanted to do, just dance. And they came and killed them and raped them and cut them and, 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 and they shot the Gentiles, and they did horrible things. For what? They started it, so please, you want to stop it? Stop it. Bring back the houses. We are protecting, I mean, Israel is protecting themselves. It, there's, it's, nobody talks about the cities that it's very evacuated a whole year in Israel. People are displaced and they are, they are refugees in their own house. Okay. I just, okay. I, I just, I just, you know, and
Your three minutes is up. No, no, your three minutes is up. Everybody's up. The beep, please, three minutes.
I want to say one more thing.
No, no, we're good. We're good. Three point of order.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Gomez, resident of the city of Middletown, listening to the Parks Department report and from our Parks Department Commissioner. It's testament of this city's commitment and this distinguished body's commitment to keep our city a great place to live, work, raise families. That's why Middletown is a destination for so many New Yorkers who have thought about leaving New York, but give it a chance because this is a place where we can make a comeback. And I, and that also shows that this body has their plates full, where a lot of local issues, that's what local government is all about, looking for local solutions for local problems, working in partnership with our other levels of government, our county, our state, our national elected officials to address the immediate local needs, whether it be quality of life, public safety, economic growth, continuing to build the business climate. And I think the downtown is testament to that. We understand and we appreciate this body's commitment to address those issues. At the same time, I, I appreciate and respect the commitment made by the mayor and the council at our last meeting, that not to let this body, or this important time to address the council, to be taken hostage by any group or any agenda that may try to deviate the goal of this body. It is not that this body does not, is not interested in peace. I think they've spoken about that. But this distinguished body here understands, we the people understand, that any issue, there are different viewpoints. And just some, like, some may be a little more militant and more vocal, others that may have a different perspective, or maybe part of a greater silent majority also have the right to be heard. What I saw at the last meeting, when one member of our community stood up to speak, and somebody else, maybe more vocal, tried to shush that person, that's unacceptable. That is wrong. You cannot advocate for tolerance for the rights to be heard when you want to silence others that differ with you. Okay? And if the freedom of speech mean anything, it means learning to listen, learning to understand that if you truly believe where you stand, you also have to know better the other side to truly appreciate and address the issues reasonably. So I thank this common, this, the Common Council, every one of your members for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to listen to be everybody, to listen to everybody and ensure that all views are considered. And I encourage all members of the audience to be respectful to the different perspectives. And I think that will make us a stronger country in the future and a more special Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jenna. I'm a Orange County community member. I'm 15 years old. Did you know in Gaza, if you're lucky enough to make it to my age, you have already witnessed and survived four wars? This time isn't even a war, it's a genocide. Over 18,000 innocent people have died, including 18,000 children in Gaza, over the span of just a little over a year. You might be thinking, why am I bringing this up here in Middletown? Middletown contributes approximately 350,000 American tax dollars to help fund this genocide in Gaza. So when people say America first, or this has nothing to do with America, yes, it does. It's time to prioritize Americans instead of arming Israel for their war crimes. For the people who are questioning, what does Middletown have to do with this? What does Middletown have to do with the Ukraine, that there's a whole Ukraine flag when you first walk in? We're not here asking you to represent Palestinians or fund Palestinians. We're literally here to ask you to stop bombing Palestinians. Is that too much to ask for? Instead of using our tax dollars to fund this genocide, why don't you use it for important things, like help remove the homeless out the streets, healthcare, and better education for the American people? Caring about the lives of innocent children and thousands of civilians, thousands of children being slaughtered isn't only an American value, it's a conservative value, and it's a religious value. And to the hypocrites and the spineless people who can't say that, they have no future in our government. I can't believe that what I'm seeing today, I can't believe everything that I'm seeing today, and that people still have the audacity to say this is about antisemitism. Being silent during the genocide is equivalent to being silent during the Holocaust or slavery. It hurts to know that there are people out there with no care in the world for the innocent lives being taken day by day. I can't believe that any civilized nation who believes in rights and freedoms need convincing that this isn't okay. The Palestinian struggle isn't just a fight for justice, it's a tough battle for the basic human rights everyone should have just for being alive. It's a constant stand against oppression and the cruel denial of even the smallest bit of human dignity. All we're asking for is a permanent ceasefire and to stop funding this genocide. You could see the images and video of the, videos of the horrific attacks happening in Gaza live on social media. No one could convince you that what is happening is okay. Every innocent individual deserves to live without fear and violence. To think of the fear these kids have to endure just from the noises of the bombs is enough to break the hearts of anyone who actually has one. As we're speaking and debating about this right now, people in Gaza are being starved to death and bombed at the same time. Voting for a permanent ceasefire is the least we could do as humans. Please don't let money, propaganda, or medial lies make you turn your back on humanity at a time they need you most. As Malcolm X once said, "I've had enough of someone else's propaganda. I'm for truth no matter who tells it. I'm for justice no matter who is it, who it's for." And I just want to let you guys know, October 7th didn't happen in a vacuum, it started in 1948. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I want you to close your eyes and imagine what does an American look like? That is really part of the question. If we have people who look like an American suffering, maybe like our brothers and sisters in Ukraine, we go into their defense because they look like or relate to what an American is. When we think about our brothers and sisters in Palestine, do you feel like you're related? Do you feel their struggle? This is what this comes down to. There's a lot of historical pain from both sides. We are all children of Abraham. The people, the Jewish people suffered during the Holocaust, it wasn't okay. They got to Palestine, they were given land forcibly, but they have a right to exist. Then what happens? The people of Palestine start to suffer. The people who were, who were suffered are now causing suffering. This is not an antisemitic thing at all, because actually Semitic means to be of Afro, Afro-Asian linguistic family of Hebrew, Arabic, Aramaic. So asking for a ceasefire is really, not, and not including a ceasefire, is really antisemitic against the Palestinians. Your pain from the Jewish people are felt, we understand that. And it wasn't okay what happened historically. What's going on in Palestine, again, I said this before when I came up, I'm sorry, I'm Kyle Conway, resident of Middletown, forgive me. We are watching what happened to the Native Americans in this country, number one. And now we feel sorry, now we feel sorry. It was a, it was a crime against humanity. What's going on in Palestine? Yes, there is an issue with the hostages, and you are correct. But as, as the youngin' just said, this didn't start October 7th. Maybe the people who are doing this don't know how to translate their frustration, because how else, what else are they supposed to do? I'm not advocating no violence against anyone. But what needs to be done when our tax dollars are funding a genocide, are funding an apartheid, are funding an open-air jail? Thank you for that. The reason why Middletown citizens are coming to you, at least, if it's not about money, it's about the ceremonial part of it. You are leaders in the community. People look to you and say, hey, what are our leaders are saying? How do our leaders feel? And we cared about, we talking about land, people's homes, and things not being represented. We talking about families. This is, Palestinians are part of the Middletown family as well.
My name is Amira, and I'm a resident of Orange County, and I have multiple family businesses in Middletown. I'm here to talk about the ongoing genocide in Palestine once again. Last time I came, I noticed that there was a Ukrainian flag. But we are just saying to stop sending money and bombing people's homes. For me, as a Middletown community member, I would like to know that I'm in a community that calls for a ceasefire. I understand that your job is to help the people of Middletown, but our taxes are funding a genocide. This should not be seen as an irrelevant issue but a very serious matter. 75 years of killing women, children, and innocent people is not okay. Killing 20,000 kids is not okay. That is also not to mention that Israelis are using single-digit numbers. We are talking thousands dead. About 46,000 plus the people injured, hospitalized, and starving. Why should we see the, these actions and watch these brutal murders of children every day? And I have met one of those people who witnessed it for that matter, and their story left me shook. I'm here for them today. I'm an Orange County community member, and I think the least I can do is get my community to call for a ceasefire. Did you know that what's happening in Palestine is the best documented genocide in the world? Orange County, look into your hearts and find room for the children of Palestine. You have the power to make a difference by simply saying ceasefire now. So, Orange County, once again, will you call for a ceasefire? Thank you.
I am Hanan Abinaser. I am 11 years old, and I'm a Orange County resident. And I'm here to talk about the ongoing genocide in Gaza. The fact that Israel could murder so many kids and feel okay about it. Today, Middletown, you can make a difference by calling for a ceasefire. Imagine seeing your starving kids suffering and cannot be able to do anything. Imagine witnessing all this bloody murder from Israel. Supposedly 50,000 killed, plus the ones under the rebels. Israel, you, the Israeli president literally said he wants to see a pool filled with Palestinian Even including the innocent ones. Imagine being a Palestinian and getting killed just because you're a race. Israel's violence level is insane. Today, if you, you want a ceasefire, all you have to do is say ceasefire now.
Thank you so much for your time. Uh, my name is Bravon Runga, and I'm with For the Many. Uh, I'm here to speak about good cause eviction. I first want to thank the Common Council and the mayor for considering this legislation and moving forward good cause eviction protections. Uh, I had a very productive meeting with the mayor and Alderman Johnson last month. I want to focus my comments tonight on why it's imperative that Middletown pass a strong version of good cause eviction, which means closing dangerous loopholes that could be taken advantage of and leave tenants out in the cold. So far, 11 municipalities across New York have passed a version of good cause eviction. The cities of Albany, Ithaca, Kingston, Hudson, Newburgh, Beacon of Bucipsi, and the town of Fishkill, as well as the villages of New Paltz, Nyack, and Catskill. In the town of Fishkill, which passed good cause at the end of last month, a strong version of good cause passed unanimously, even the Republicans on the council voting yes. Every single municipality that passed good cause has passed a strong version, which means that they set a portfolio size exemption at one unit. That would cover as many tenants as possible and close a potential LLC loophole that corporate landlords could exploit by getting around the law by creating multiple LLCs. The fact that municipalities are unanimously voting for such a strong, for strong good cause eviction protections, and the fact that even Republicans are voting to close the LLC loophole, shows that this is not a radical idea but a common sense one. Strong good cause protections are the bare minimum needed to protect tenants. And Middletown is more in need of these protections than some of the cities that have already passed good cause, due to the higher concentration of renters in the city and the greater proportion of those renters that are rent burdened. If Middletown chooses to pass a weaker version of good cause by increasing the portfolio size exemption, it would be the only municipality in the state to do so and set a terrible precedent. The housing crisis is more acute than ever, especially in these winter months. In the last three months, 38 warrants of eviction were filed in the Middletown City Court. That's 38 families, 38 tenants being put out in the cold. So again, I urge you to pass a strong version of good cause eviction, and I thank you for your work on this issue. Now more than ever, it's important that everyone in Middletown has a home they can afford. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Amanda Crump, and I'm from Middle War, Middletown's Fourth Ward. Um, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak again. Um, it's not easy to approach the council. Uh, public speaking is a very common fear, and I'm thankful that we've had the opportunity to stand and do it together as a community. Middletown has the chance right now to join other cities and create a domino effect. We hoped to inspire neighboring councils to take this same step and in turn, create more pressure on the representatives above. As we have addressed as a group in the past, we understand that Middletown is not directly funding the genocide. All we are asking you to do is pass a ceasefire resolution, making a statement recognizing that Palestinian and Jewish lives matter, and no more harm should be done to either. Our proposed resolution also mentions that the United States federal government and members of Congress hold immense diplomatic, military, and financial power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives. This is so important to highlight. to save Palestinian and Israeli lives. This is so important to highlight. In regards to what Alderman Massey and what Alderman Ray said at the last meeting, I would like to inform you that we are in fact grateful for the resolution that you have passed and we did not ignore it. Two meetings ago, when you both were absent, we came and we commended the council on the one-sentence resolution. Thank you for recognizing that you do not have to be an expert on foreign policy to call for peace. We hope that you will take it a step further and call for a ceasefire. You do not have to be experts and understand every detail, but you should listen to the people put in place to analyze these things. The experts that have been put in place to uphold human rights worldwide. How much longer will Israel and the US completely ignore international law? How much longer are we going to trust the Israeli and US government instead of the rest of the world that is calling for a ceasefire? Please, we urge you to join us and make a statement to our government. Be the heroes and stand on the right side of history. At the last meeting, a young Palestinian girl was speaking and she said to the council, "If you are not disgusted by Israel's actions, then I am not sure you are human." I genuinely do not understand why this was called to a point of order and yet not some blatantly racist statements made by others attending, like one person that said Arabs were always on the other side of genocide. Characterizing an entire race of people as being violent is very concerning and I continuously see Zionists using language to dehumanize Palestinians and make them all out to be terrorists and therefore deserving of death. Palestinians are human beings the same as all of us and their people do not deserve this collective punishment and genocide for any reason. There is nothing that could excuse the horror and terrorism that is constant for Palestinian civilians. Lastly, thank you for considering good cause. I would like to urge the council to please pass this in its strongest form, meaning we need legislation with a portfolio size of one unit to maximize tenant protections and prevent any loopholes.
Good evening, council. My name is Joyce Brown. I'm a Middletown resident. After using my voice to speak here today, I will go home, I will take off my shoes, and I will stress about finals that I have for the next two weeks. That is a luxury because knowledge is power, language holds meaning, rhetoric is important, and it is a luxury that Palestinians lack today. I am urging you to use your words, use your rhetoric, use the knowledge and the position that you have been entrusted with to say the word ceasefire and actively not condone the genocide happening in Gaza right now. I have the luxury to live in a home with my family and to enjoy meals and to go shop in downtown and spend my money and make money in Middletown. I don't want my tax dollars to end the lives of children, women, men, people just trying to live regardless of where they come from, who they are, and you shouldn't either. Thank you today for your time. It's nice to meet you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and for your listening. My name is April Gardi. I'm from Newburgh and I'm a US Army veteran having served six years as a military police officer and about four years as a chaplain assistant. I was sent to Ground Zero the day nine eleven happened with my military police unit and I can tell you that the images and videos I forced myself to watch coming out of Gaza since October from journalists, healthcare workers, emergency responders, humanitarian aid organizations on the ground have been extremely triggering. I've done this though to educate myself and bear witness, trusting my eyes rather than the lies as to how our federal US tax dollars are being used to fund and enable a genocide in Gaza. This council has called for a peace across the globe and an immediate and unconditional release of the hostages. I love that. Now how do we achieve this? I can tell you that it's not by sending eighteen-plus billion dollars of federal US taxpayer money in the forms of arms sales and US-supplied weapons, munitions, and two thousand to four thousand pound JDAMs to Israel, which have been used in serious violations of international humanitarian law in the manner that is inconsistent with US law and policy. It shows a serious failure on US leadership when we have US senators and spokesmen in less than a year's time stating that Israel is committed to international law, to, international law does not apply to Israel or any of us for that matter, and we keep funding and sending weapons to Israel. In fact, another six hundred and eighty million dollar weapon package on the way. Clearly, Israel could not keep fighting without the United States' support. With each war crime committed by the IDF, Israel loses credibility, becomes more isolated internationally, and closer to becoming a pariah state. The US-funded genocide is a strategic threat to US interests, not only domestically, as those billions could be used to be supporting crises that Americans are experiencing right now surrounding homelessness, healthcare, food, and basic human existence, but also the liability to US global interests. It makes BRICS a whole lot more attractive to countries who are wishing to distance themselves from the US and divest from the US dollar and thus devaluing the US dollar. But I digress. Israel's effort to destabilize the region by breaking ceasefire agreements and perpetrating violence continues in the hopes of establishing their idea of a greater Israel with US enabling. I can't help but wonder how long it will be before the US is pulled into another twenty-year war with US troops being used as pawns and tools of oppression based on more lies as we were used in the global war on terror. What are you going to say that you did to try to stop it when American sons and daughters start coming home in body bags and flag-draped coffins? The patriotic thing to do is to call for a ceasefire and demand our politicians to do better. A ceasefire resolution is not simply a political decision, it's a statement of humanity. By passing a ceasefire resolution, it benefits this council by positioning it as a leader and an advocate for global peace efforts, reinforcing humanitarian values and promoting unity. I ask you to look within and have the courage to stand up as leaders and pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
My name is Camilla. I'm from Middletown. At the last few council meetings, the Commissioner for Public Works has been speaking about the water reservoir levels being very low and this October being the driest on record. It sounds like the department has been doing a great job of managing the problems that causes, but these problems are only going to increase as climate change and global warming continue. A 2023 NASA-led study confirmed that droughts and pluvials, which are heavy rain periods, have been occurring more often. They also found that the worldwide intensity of these extreme wet and dry events is closely linked to global warming and that floods and droughts account for more than twenty percent of the economic losses caused by extreme weather events in the US each year. Climate change is both a global and a very local issue. Our actions don't happen in a vacuum. What we do affects the rest of the planet and all the people we share it with, and what is done around the world affects us here, in this country and in the city of Middletown. The bombs, jets, and tanks Israel is using and the cargo planes bringing ammunition to Israel, much of it from the United States, has been producing a massive amount of emissions, which have a very real and very dangerous impact on global warming. A study on greenhouse gas emissions from the Israel-Gaza conflict was published this June. It covered the first one hundred and twenty days of Israel's attack on Gaza from October to February, which is now at day four hundred and twenty-three of the current genocide. Only twenty-eight percent of the total time they've spent bombing Palestine since October 2023. The total emissions from direct war activities in the first one hundred and twenty days are estimated to be between four hundred and twenty thousand and six hundred and fifty-two thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, which is greater than the annual emissions of twenty-six individual countries and territories. Those figures don't include data from the past three hundred and three days from the seventy-six years Israel has been occupying Palestinian land prior to October 2023 or projections for the environmental toll of rebuilding Palestine. The longer the siege and bombing of Gaza continues, the worse the environmental impact will be on the planet that all of us inhabit. This is very much a problem of our own making. Our country is sending money and arms to Israel. Our government has the power to effectively end this genocide at any time. We just have to push them to do so, which is why we're here asking you to use your collective power as the city council to help us get one step closer to doing that. The city of Middletown passing a ceasefire resolution will not directly stop the genocide, but it can help show our state representatives and in turn, our federal representatives that we stand against genocide, against ecocide, and against the use of our country's money and power to help commit crimes against humanity and our planet. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cody. I was born and raised in Newburgh, New York. I'm attending college at SUNY Orange Middletown, where I not only frequent nearby businesses on school days, but have paid thousands of dollars in tuition. As a resident of Orange County and New York State, I have a vested interest in the passing of a ceasefire resolution countywide, especially in the towns that I spend so much time and money in. With that being said, I'm here today to refute the accusations of antisemitism recently levied at my fellow members of Raleigh-Middletown, most notably made by former Orange County Legislative Minority Leader Jeff Berkman, who I was not aware was going to be here today. On a radio show, Berkman called us hostile towards Jewish people. As an Ashkenazi Jew, I find these allegations to be grossly untrue and to be disgusting weapons of, a disgusting weaponization of very real discrimination and harassment me and other Jewish people around the world experience. Discrimination I am very familiar with as my family fled from Soviet Ukraine to the United States in nineteen seventy-six in order to escape persecution for their faith. I have never observed any antisemitic sentiment coming from any of my colleagues and I would go so far as to say that the conflation of antisemitism and anti-Zionism, or the idea that the state of Israel somehow represents the interests and values of the Jewish people, is antisemitic itself and only serves the interests, and only serves the interests of real, honest-to-God antisemites. In fact, framing Israel in this light only serves to embolden these abhorrent individuals. By claiming that Israel represents the will of Jews, you are then falsely claiming that then-Jewish people must unilaterally support the genocide of Palestinians. A genocide that has been viewed around the world in real time for the first time in human history, thanks to the internet, is being framed as in defense of Jews. For the past fourteen months, on top of the sorrow I feel for the lives lost, now quickly nearing forty-five thousand human beings, most of which being women and children, I also have been deeply disturbed by the constant rhetoric from both American Zionists and the Israeli government claiming that the senseless murder of children, destruction of schools, homes, and hospitals, and purposeful starvation of civilians is being done in my name. I rebuke and take great offense to the notion that my existence as an ethnic Jew is contingent on the existence of a genocidal apartheid state and that anyone who opposes this ongoing genocide is therefore antisemitic. It has never and will never be antisemitic to protest a genocide. I would also like to add as a side note that when I grabbed this sign this morning, I realized that there were three thousand more dead children than there were when I wrote it in July. Thank you.
Good evening, Alderman. My name is Sam Kimball and I live here in Orange County where I was born and raised. I have spent much of my life coming to shop in Middletown and attend cultural events here and I am grateful to be speaking to you. Israel, a colonial settler state that engages in apartheid, which stole Palestine in the early twentieth century through mass violence, terrorism, and land theft, is perpetuating genocide in Gaza under the cover of self-defense, a right which it does not have under international law as the occupying power in Gaza. It perpetually portrays itself as victim, assisted and abetted in these claims by our media. It spreads wild disinformation about its history and its acts to deflect responsibility, much as one of the previous speakers has done. Hundreds of thousands of Gazan civilians, many of them children, are being bombed and starved to death, killed by disease and thirst, being blown up by drones or sniped in the streets. Northern Gaza is being completely besieged and emptied of its inhabitants in an act of ethnic cleansing, going against all international laws. It is a war of annihilation of the Palestinians in Gaza as Israel hopes to empty the territory of its population and settle it. And yet, our country is funding and arming this genocide, blocking ceasefire resolutions, and lying every day to the world about Israel's actions. But the majority of the world knows what is happening. The International Criminal Court has issued arrest warrants against Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu and former Minister of Defense Yoav Galant, as well as Hamas leader Mohammed Daif. The International Court of Justice has ordered Israel to take all measures to stop genocidal acts from occurring. Yet, of course, Israel has completely ignored these orders from the highest court on earth. But in this extreme darkness and justice, there is an opportunity for good here, right in this community, right in this room. And we can strive towards justice through a simple action. We are asking you to pass a clear resolution from the city of Middletown that includes a demand for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, an arms embargo on Israel, and send this resolution to all of the government representatives above you. We appreciate your previous resolution for world peace, but we are asking for something clearer and more concrete. The federal tax dollars from Middletown's tax dollars, some four hundred and fifty thousand, are going to Israel to buy arms and carry out further war crimes. This is money that could go to the people of Middletown who are in dire need of housing and basic services. We understand that Middletown and this council are not directing funds to the genocide and that is our federal tax dollars. That is why we are asking you to make a statement to the representatives above you who are directly funding this. You could be local heroes in the community by taking this brave and significant step. Your actions would go down in history as standing for justice and you will have a clear conscience when the true gravity of Israel's genocide is recognized in this country. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Ahmed and I'm a Warwick resident. My partner works in the city of Middletown and my child attends daycare here. Though I'm not a Middletown resident, I spend much of my time here and I feel connected to this city. As a brown Muslim woman, I feel proud to be a member of this community that reflects many nationalities, ethnicities, languages, and beliefs. In the last seven city council meetings, we have written and put forth a resolution for the council. In a previous meeting, a few Aldermen commented that there was a response to this proposal, which was, as stated, to pass a short resolution calling for world peace. While there may have been good intentions with this measure, I urge you as city council members to reconsider our proposal for a variety of reasons. Firstly, our proposed resolution is different. Its language is specific and powerful. It validates and affirms all of the communities who have lost loved ones in this genocide, including the many Israelis and the now hundreds of thousands of Palestinians who have been killed as a result of this collective punishment. There is no doubt that Gaza desperately needs humanitarian aid and a permanent ceasefire in the region. This resolution directly calls for and pushes up the ladder to demand these lifesaving necessities from officials at the state and national level. Secondly, this resolution, if passed, could be amazing for all of Orange County. Just like Newburgh's decision to pass a ceasefire resolution has inspired many of our surrounding communities to do the same, if Middletown passes such a resolution, it can inspire smaller towns like Chester and Warwick, for example, to follow suit. Thirdly, this resolution can also help communicate that the city of Middletown stands by its Muslim and Arab residents and visitors, especially as Islamophobic hate crimes have skyrocketed one hundred and eighty percent after October 7th. I cannot help but think about and cry, thinking about the six-year-old boy Wadea Al-Fadoufayoum, who was stabbed to death by his landlord in Bridgeview, Illinois, last year. A resolution like this can send a message that we demand safety and security for the whole community of Middletown. Fourth, this council should pass this resolution because simply, you actually can pass it. This body does not face the same pressures of lobbyists to pass a measure. Our federal reps have often been blocked from considering a ceasefire resolution simply because of giant lobbyists like AIPAC. You all have a unique opportunity to move forward with less red tape and political silencing. I implore you to take it. Fifth, this resolution can be a powerful first step to eventually divest all of our federal tax dollars from funding Israel's military. As it's been said, it's calculated about twenty-five dollars of each of our taxes go to Israel. That's nearly half a million dollars going to murder Palestinian children each year. Imagine how many lives we could save and people we could house with that money. If we don't pass this resolution, we continue to contribute politically and financially towards this genocide. Our young people will receive the message that their lives don't matter, or worse, that they shouldn't care about the rest of the world. When the dust settles, what will the history books say of the people in this room? What could they say if you do the right thing? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Warda, an Orange County community member. I have children in the Middletown College. As a Palestinian mother, I stand before you not just as a member of this community, but once again, a voice for those that cannot be heard. As leaders and role models for the future generations, we have a responsibility to set a better example. The violence we are witnessing must come to an end. I am here today to ask for something simple, yet profoundly important. I'm asking you as leaders of this community to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza and to end the flow of weapons into that region. We are not asking for physical intervention or financial contributions, only a clear statement from Middletown that we stand against violence and we stand for peace. The human toll in Gaza scattering, these lives are cut short. Children will never have the chance to grow, to dream, or to experience a life of peace. This is not just a tragedy for Palestine, it's a global tragedy. This is not just a tragedy for Palestine, it's a global tragedy. As human beings, we cannot remain silent and face such suffering. While we understand that Middletown does not directly fund this violence, we also recognize the silence in the face of injustice is a problem. Your voice matters. By passing this resolution and sending it to the representatives at higher levels of government, you could help make a difference and show the world where we stand, and that our voices will be heard. This is not solely about Palestine, it's about standing up for what's right. It's about teaching our children that we witness wrongdoing, we have a responsibility to speak out, that the American way is justice for all. That is why we are here today, and we're urging you to take this important step and ask for a ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this time. I admire your patience and really your consideration. My name is Carol Strauss-Oderopoulos. I am a resident of Monroe, and I'm here just to make a single point very quickly, because it's in response to Mayor DiStefano's sincere concern. I respect that over residents of other towns and villages like Monroe taking up time and attention in your city chamber. Many years ago, I served as an elected official on a town board, and I understand this concern of quote-unquote outsiders from neighboring communities taking the mic. And so, one must ask, why would a person such as myself, who understands this as a legitimate concern, appear here before you as a quote-unquote outsider? You have heard from many here, including myself, in the past of our support for Middletown with respect to shopping, medical care, home services, et cetera. True, outsiders do not pay property taxes here, but then again, a person could be renting in Middletown in a property owned by individuals who do not live in Middletown. Does one or the other deserve greater respect and attention from the council and mayor? But I digress here, but in the simple interest of raising questions that have come to mind over this concern regarding regional voices at your city council meetings. What point can I make that differs from previous voices that have expounded upon the ways that area communities contributed to this great city? Well, considering the facts on the ground that a genocide is taking place, we cannot stand silently by and are compelled, at the least, to call upon our communities to support ceasefire and arms embargo resolutions. It's simply the way of the world that smaller communities like Monroe, Chester, Wallkill, Ocean, et cetera, look to our regional heart, to our pole star, Middletown, for leadership, to show the way, to set the example. Of course, I want to call upon Monroe to endorse a ceasefire and arms embargo resolution. Please shine the light for our region so that folks like myself can go confidently before small towns and village councils. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor. I shop in Middletown. I admit it, I'm from Bloomberg, but on Fridays I go to the Middletown Islamic Center.
Steve.
Okay. Sorry?
That's in Way We Have It.
What is?
Middletown Islamic Center.
Oh, that's right. All right. My remarks must be stricken from the record there. Okay. All right. I didn't have a prepared speech tonight, but I've been in sales for 47 years. And one thing we learned in sales is you point a finger at someone, "You need to do this." There's four fingers, three fingers, pointing back at me. So, for my colleagues that have said, "You need to do this, you need to do that, you need to do that," I know that will get nowhere. It really doesn't. Because, another thing I learned in sales, it's from Dale Carnegie, "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still." So, we're not trying to shove anything down your throat, we're just trying to make the case why this is a good thing. You can see my jewelry at Adams in Middletown.
Wallkill.
Wallkill, sorry. I've been here for 10 years, I still think that that is Middletown over there, but okay. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Best for less. Hello, my name is Mohammed. I am a Middletown resident. I'm also a business owner in Middletown. I'm a Palestinian-American, I'm proud to be. I'm here today to thank you all first, especially the mayor, for doing a great job for this community. To take it a step further, I think we could, you know, do something with the ceasefire resolution, especially it's something that, as a community, we've seen more faces here today expressing, you know, concern of what's going on. To the individual that says that we were invading here today, it's, you know, that's truly disgusting, because we are expressing our concern as citizens of America that we would want a ceasefire, that we do not want to see anybody dead. And now, people are trying to quiet us with propaganda, trying to make some stuff up about us Palestinians, about us Americans, you know, especially what's going on in the world. The crisis over there is gonna just evolve if we do not do something. You know, Middletown could be one of those cities to make a big spark, to do the domino effect. You know, I'm speaking from the heart today, I did not write anything down. You know, everybody already spoke all the facts today. They spoke about the truth, especially what's going on over there. It's heartbreaking. I have a younger sister, I have, you know, younger family members. Just to see what's going on there, it hurts, it hurts, it truly, truly hurts. Sometimes I cry at night, say I wish I did better, I wish I'd done something more, you know. I thank you all once again, especially the mayor. Have a good day, have a good night. Have a Merry Christmas. Take care.
President, the council, can we limit it to whoever's standing up now, just so we can get on with city business? It just seems like people keep getting up.
Okay.
How you guys doing, Everett Colley? Fourth Ward. Just wanted to say congratulations to Maria. Great job on the holiday festivities. Thank you so much for what you guys did. As far as the Christmas tree lighting, you kept us safe back there, chief, and just thank you. It took me about hour and a half just to get up here and say that. So, one thing I do want to leave you guys with is, you know, if there's a way that we can take care of Middletown business first, if we can figure out how to bring a resolution to that, that'll be great. Everyone else, I feel sorry for what you guys are going through, but Middletown business first. Thank you.
Definitely Middletown business first. That's why we want to keep our tax dollar into Middletown, so we could keep it up and going. Beautiful, nice city. We don't have to send it to kill other people's kids or bury them underground just to make other people happy, right? So, I appreciate what he said, and of course, we want to keep the money in. I was born and raised in Jerusalem, so I lived most of my life over there. Unfortunately, as a being Palestinian, even not in Gaza, but just being in Jerusalem, if you leave for a vacation or you go study outside, you have a big chance not to come back, because if they decide for you not to come back, they already kicked one out, so they're happy. And I was one of them. So, unfortunately, you guys have more rights in Jerusalem and Palestine more than me, even though I was born and raised from my father and grandfather and great-grandfather. We own lands that we can't touch. And now, this genocide is obviously the reason we asked for the ceasefire, because of course I told my kids, which is both of them, they came and spoke, because what I seen is we still seeing even after 40 years, which is, that's my age. I saw that for 40 years. I've been protesting for 40 years. We've been just calling for ceasefire for 40 years. We just need our, like, minimum human rights for 40 years that I lived in my life, and the Palestinians have been living it for over 75 years. Even though we were the hostess for the people who were in the Holocaust, they asked for our help, and that's how they came into Palestine, and we all know that, because that's a story going into generation. So, all we ask from you is a ceasefire, just to keep the money in Middletown, and to keep Middletown beautiful and Middletown people happy. Thank you very much.
Just for the record, what's your name?
Anan.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Philip. I am not a resident of Middletown. I used to live in Middletown. I work in Middletown, I have family in Middletown. I'm actually from Montgomery. And I just want to say, the big lie about Gaza is that it's an aggressor. That Gaza is aggressing against Israel, and Israel is reacting in self-defense. It's a double lie. The first lie is, most of the Israeli attacks on Gaza don't even have anything to do with Gaza. So, if you take Operation Cast Lead in 2008 and 2009, why did the Israelis attack Gaza? Not because of Gaza, not because of what Gaza did. The Israelis were very honest. This is revenge for Lebanon. In 2006, Israel suffered a major defeat in Lebanon against the Hezbollah, the party of God. And then Israelis began to panic. They are losing what they call their deterrence capacity. What they called it, and their deterrence capacity simply means it's a fancy, technical term for Arabs' fear of us, and they worry about, and they worry because the Arabs no longer fear them after this. You know, not a ragtag guerrilla army, but it's not a big thing either. It's about 6,000 fighters, the Hezbollah. At the time, it was 6,000 fighters, and their faculty inflicted and defeated on the Israeli invaders of Lebanon. And so, they were looking for somewhere where they could restore what they call their deterrence capacity. They didn't want to tangle again with the party of God, with the Hezbollah, so they targeted Gaza. Had nothing to do with Gaza. The notion that they defending themselves against Gaza. The second biggest lie is what Gaza consists of. When you read the official reports, even when you read the human rights reports, they talk about this big arsenal of weapons that Hamas has accumulated. Number one, how do you know how many weapons they have? If you knew how many weapons they had, then you must know where they are. And if you know where they are, then Israel would preemptively strike. If it's not preemptively struck, it's because it doesn't know anything about the weapons. Israel plucks numbers. I just want to, I urge you to pass a resolution, a ceasefire resolution, and free Palestine.
Okay, moving on to remarks of Mayor.
Yeah, I've been refraining from commenting on this issue, other than my remarks over the last couple of meetings have been that I believe this group, the DSA, continues to hijack our meetings. I think you heard it best from one of the speakers, that he was here for an hour and a half, and all he wanted to do was say a couple of words about Middletown, but yet it took him an hour and a half to get in front of this body to say so. But we also had to listen to what so many people here believe that's their truth, and I understand they're very passionate, it's their truth, but they think it's everybody else's truth in Middletown, and believe it's everybody else's facts. So, I continue to believe that matters of ceasefire talks in Gaza are primarily federal and international issues. They're not within the purview of city governance, and I've stated that over and over. I've emphasized as a city leader, and I believe as all of us as city leaders, we're focused on addressing local issues like public safety, housing, the economy, and so much more. They have a complaint to make from their perspective. That complaint can be made to the U.S. Department of State, other federal agencies, elected officials, president, congressmen, senators, whoever. Those people are better positioned to handle the international diplomacy that's required to address these issues. I noticed, though, not one person tonight spoke about ceasefire in Ukraine, or ceasefire in Syria, or what's going to possibly happen in South Korea now that martial law was called and then reversed, or in Lebanon. Didn't hear one mention, I don't think, of Lebanon, of what's going on there. So, the idea that it's only their truth and that we have to sit here week after week and listen to it is fine, but I believe, and I strongly believe, that we, or you, because it's your body, as a body, have an obligation to the residents of the city of Middletown to do what other legislative bodies have done when people have attempted to hijack meetings and drag them out, is have agenda items addressed at the beginning of the meeting, and non-agenda items addressed at the end of the meeting, so that the people that don't have to come here, like last meeting, the lady did not even have an opportunity to speak, because she got out of order and the public comment was cut off, or she had to leave. The guy tonight that had to wait an hour and a half to speak. People that are home watching on TV, maybe that live on Orange Terrace, that are waiting for a vote on an important resolution that affects them and their neighborhood here in Middletown, don't have to listen to the nonsense that we in Middletown are sending our tax dollars to buy weapons for Israel. There's a major dishonesty amongst many of the speakers. They represent to the people that they are asking for a ceasefire. Read the resolution that the Democratic Socialists of America, through Mr. Jason, who believes denying it, that he has proven that it wasn't originated with the Democratic Socialists of America, which they have presented, which we have in email form, proposed by them, exact word for word on their letterhead. I'll post it, I'll have Rick post it on Facebook or on our social media tomorrow, the entire email, so you can see where it's coming from, so you can see the credibility of some of the speakers. They are not just asking for a ceasefire, they're asking for so many more things. But they can ask, but they can ask after city business is taken care of, and people can go to bed, and people can come to a meeting and make a presentation regarding city business at the early part of the meeting. Why should we be any different than Wallkill in Orange County government, and I'm sure many other communities? You know, the lady spoke about Monroe, that she lives in Monroe, but she hasn't gone to the Monroe Board, because she wants her smaller community to learn from Middletown. I got news for you, Monroe is bigger than Middletown, has more people. Many of these people, we've asked over and over, have you gone to your own community? Have you requested, have you done this march to the town boards or village boards that you live in, that you're coming from? The man from Montgomery, have you been to the Montgomery Board? Have you been to the Village Board? Have you been to the Town Board? Not one has come up and said, "Hey, guess what? After we heard that, you know, you had concerns about this here in Middletown, that we're just coming here, we went to our Town Board, we went to Montgomery, we went to Wallkill, we went to these other communities." Not one. Maybe they have, they haven't said it, though. So, it's a little ironic that we, as a city council, have to possibly change the agenda in order to allow Middletown residents to know what's happening in Middletown. But I strongly urge you to do it, and I hope you consider it, and moving forward. On good cause eviction, I appreciate the words. We did receive a letter from Victor Guzman, who's a representative- from Victor Guzman, who's a representative of, I'm not sure the name of the group, but it's, uh, it's a group that's active regarding good cause.
Hudson Valley Justice Center.
Hudson Valley Justice Center. And we'll be responding, myself and, um, Alden Johnson will be responding to them as we gather data. We're also reaching out to other communities to find out about litigation. Is this ongoing litigation? Um, we've had, requested our corporation council to do a legal review. And, um, so, we're looking at that, and how it impacts moving forward if we do adopt something, and whatever we adopt. So, um, we are working on it, and we'll continue to work on it, and keep you abreast of the progress that we make. You also had some very positive Middletown news tonight. And, and it's a shame that we had to alter the agenda in order to get the kids that were here for us to honor. And otherwise, they would, they would, they would be sitting here listening to all this. It's nine, was it nine-thirty at night? We wouldn't have been able to honor the own, the, the kids in our community that were here, um, with the rec department in order to, um, receive accolades from the city council, and, and myself, and the community, because they would have had to leave the meeting. So, I wanna thank the council president for changing the agenda, and allowing them to come up, upfront. And also, the Orange Terrace issue, that would not have been addressed. There would have been a line of people, and they would have had to wait an hour. So, all I'm asking is that you consider doing that for everyone who comes to a meeting. But, the rec presentation was fantastic, Alderman Whit. Thank you for, um, working with Ray Lynn and doing that. Um, I was talked into doing the, um, Radio City trip on Sunday with the rec department. And I, I did pay, despite Mr. Massey alleging that I did not pay. But, I, I did pay for my own ticket. And we had a nice group of people. Yeah, he doesn't believe me yet. But, um...
Receipt.
Receipt. You know, cancelled check. But, um, there was a group, probably close to a hundred and fifteen people, I think, Ray Lynn? Yeah, between the two busloads. It was a great trip. Um, I encourage people, really, if you, um, that's the way to go on these bus trips, especially this busy time of year. But, um, and it wasn't just people from Middletown. It's people from all over the area, primarily from Middletown. But, um, and, and that's one of the good things about us, is we open up all our programs to the community. We don't just single, you have to be a Middletown resident. Uh, many communities do do that. You have to be a resident of that community. We're open. We're diverse in many, many ways. We appreciate people coming into our community and spending money. But, if you come in here and spend money, that doesn't mean you're going to dictate what we, as a community, have to do. I appreciate all the comments coming up here. I have fun with the one gentleman there, um, who has trouble with his geography a little bit. But, um, but we, um, we do appreciate what goes on here. But, they don't appreciate, many of them do not appreciate that we, as individuals, have different opinions than them. They don't appreciate that we have thirty thousand people plus that live in the city of Middletown. We've heard from probably less than ten from their group that live in the city of Middletown. They don't appreciate the hundreds and thousands, thousands of emails from people all over that we received on the other side of this issue. Mr. McCormick can attest to it. We have a record of all those emails from, and I don't know if they're from Middletown or where they're from. I didn't read them all. It was a form letter, admittedly. But, my point is, is that people are very much involved in this issue on both sides. Both sides have a set of facts. Council did the right thing. They called for peace. They called for release of the hostages. That's not enough. And I'll tell you one reason why it's not enough for this group, or the leadership of this group. And that's those things right up there in the wall, those television cameras. That's something many of the communities in this county do not have, is broadcasting meetings live. They have a forum here. They can continue to have that forum. But, I think it should be at the end of the meeting, so Middletown people can relax, go to bed, and know that their issues have been addressed. Finally, um, we did have a court hearing today on the Fireman Joe statue. Went pretty good. We believe that the judge will be issuing a decision, I'm not believe, he said he will be issuing a decision on our show cause order by the end of the week. Show cause order, I think it's the terminology for it, um, would, we've requested that the statue be returned, put in place, and that we, um, would then litigate the different, you know, the difference in what she is saying is owed to her versus what our contract says. Um, I, I felt confident after the end of the hearing, that the judge would be looking at it our way. But, we'll find out by the end of the week. We also had a ceremony at the same time. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, because it was at the same time as the court hearing. And the court hearing was in Goshen. Uh, the Garden Lovers Club of Middletown donated a bench, and we were represented, I think, by Alderman Massey and, and, uh, and Maria Bruni from the Economic Development Office. I wanna thank them for their commitment to the city. They, you know, they had a big celebration, I think it was last year, um, of their, it was a hundred years, I believe, in Middletown. And, um, and they do fantastic work in the community. And, uh, so I just wanted to publicly thank them. I wanna congratulate Maria and her staff, and thank the police chief, DPW, and all those involved, recreation department, all those involved in the, uh, Christmas parade, in the holiday parade, and remind people on October, on October, on December twenty-ninth, um, we have a tentative time for, I believe, five o'clock for the menorah lighting and the run for downtown park. And, um, and also, I think the rec department did mention that the ice rink opened today for a free skate, and will be open starting Friday night on a regular basis. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any question for the mayor, Alderman Whit?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, you, you and your team have been very transparent and proactive about communicating the on-street parking during the winter season. Having had our first snowfall, what is your take on how that went, please?
Sure. First snowfall, we had the police department, um, go on, uh, hopefully every street, and as many as possible. They did provide a report, and we did have hundreds of cars after the snow alert were not removed from the streets. We did not ticket on the first night. Um, rather than do that, we then started putting on cars that were parking overnight, uh, placards that were mailed, um, advising people of the local law, and advising them of the telephone number, putting the barcode out, or, um, what do you call, QR code out, for they can sign up for the, um, for the notification system, and all of the methods of communicating to people when a snow alert would go in effect. They got their one bite at the apple that night. There were no tickets issued. We did as much warning as possible. Um, I still see on social media today, people asking, hey, is Middletown's overnight parking ban in effect? Well, I, I can't, we can't knock on every single door and explain it to people. Uh, we, we did the mailing. We did social media. We've done television. We've done, um, uh, as I said, leaving the placards on the cars. Uh, we've, we've done an awful lot, I think, as much as we possibly could. The next round, when we do declare a snow alert, vehicles that are parked on the street will be ticketed. And, um, but we did also send out a letter on my weekly message, asking neighbors that, because we also got a lot of calls from people in the community saying, hey, my neighbor left their car out all night. They didn't get a ticket. So, we asked them, maybe they're not aware of the local law that went in effect, or the messaging that can be put in place. Maybe knock on their door if you know them well, or give them a phone call. Make them aware of the, of the local law, and, uh, of the snow alert law. And hopefully, they'll do it the next time. But, the next time, there will be tickets. And if necessary, cars will be towed. So, if we get a significant snowfall, and the plows need to get through, we will be towing vehicles. So, that's a very, very costly thing. So, we try to do this. As you know, this is an experimental project for this year, to see how the public responds. And the benefits to it are, of course, people being able to, like, through the Thanksgiving holiday, we had some nice emails from constituents saying, you know, my kids are home from college. It's nice they didn't have to park at the old Acme supermarket there. It shows you where they, how long they've been here. Um, emails like that. People were thankful of the law. But, the only way it's gonna work, and the only way it's gonna get renewed next year, is if the public participates and listens for the snow alerts.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Remarks of, uh, Alderman, Alderman Massey.
You gotta do the department heads?
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta do the department heads. I totally messed them. Uh, economic development.
That's gonna throw that off your agenda.
No, it's been a long night.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna, the parade, the tree lighting, it was awesome. Our twenty-seventh, uh, year of doing this, and it just keeps growing every year. We're estimating about forty-eight-hundred people. The whole parade route was like two, three deep on the sidewalk. I know you, everybody marched. Um, couldn't have done it without everybody's participation. Jacob, uh, DPW, his deputy Ross Mastria, Chief O'Wanchu, PD Sergeant Welch, Chief Brady, bringing in Santa, and the fire department. The enlarged Middletown City School District, their participation was amazing. Amount of kids involved, um, Middletown Youth Football, Cheerleading, Little League, numerous businesses. And I understand there's the battle of the floats now between departments, rec and, uh, and the clerk's office. So, we look forward to, uh, more floats, uh, and more participation next year. And obviously, we had numerous, um, numerous, uh, sponsors. JHM Tree Service for cutting the tree, Freedom Crane for lifting the tree and bringing it over to Degnan Square, Rotolo and Son Electric, Electric Workers Union's, uh, three-six-three for decorating the tree. The entire bid, uh, team, Joseph Farrar, Stephanie Sandy, Eileen Hansen, Caitlin. Thanks to also Ashley Torisi and, uh, for helping us, uh, uh, also volunteering, her and Dan Higbee, uh, the local folks helping us and helping us also search for the tree. Gerda Gardens, Andrew Brito, our emcee, who's been emceeing, uh, for all these years, the numerous volunteers. I could go on and on. But, you guys, you, you've seen it, and you were, this is the bet, the best, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we just wanna wish everybody, uh, a great holiday season. And we're already planning for next year. Um, and again, thank you for participating and being part of it, and all the kind words that we've been getting from, from the event. Uh, this Saturday, Confluence Running is having their grand opening at the Rail Trail Co- Commons. Uh, they opened up, and they're gonna have their, um, the grand opening ribbon cutting, so at ten-thirty this Saturday. Um, looking forward to that event. They're also gonna have some kind of run-walk right after the, the, uh, the ribbon cutting. They're gonna have, uh, various vendors, um, shoe vendors, sneaker vendors, sports vendors there. So, come on by at ten-thirty and help support this great new business. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
You guys are great.
DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Um, wanna update you about the drought, uh, condition. As you know, we've been preparing to confront or deal with the drought for the last couple of months. We set up pumps to pump from our emergency sources. And, um, we were very successful. We manned the emergency pumps twenty-four hours a day by using our water department. And I wanna thank Brian Smith and, uh, our entire water department and sewer department for being there for us. They've done tremendous amount of work to use that emergency source for pumping water into Shuangang Reservoir. Uh, we started pumping actually when it started raining on, uh, November twenty-first. And we seized the operation tonight, because we ran out of water pumping into our reservoirs. Uh, we were pumping about, uh, thirty-three hundred gallons per minute. And, uh, it was a very, very successful operation. And we will be preparing, uh, a report to issue for DEC as, as we are required to do. So, with that being said, our storage in the reservoirs went from seventy-one, seventy-two percent to eighty percent because of this four inches of rain that we had in, um, November. But, we need much more rain. The whole, entire region needs much more rain. And it's, it's true, global warming is having, is having, uh, a fiasco with us. Uh, before you tonight, there's a council resolution, important council resolution. We're requesting your support, uh, for hiring, uh, CPL to do the design for replacing wa- raw water line from Kench over to Shuangang. And this is only phase one, about four thousand feet. And the idea, as I explained earlier in previous sessions, is to install a larger pipe so that we can capture more water from Kench when it, when the rain happens, so we can store it in our reservoirs. This is the whole idea about our safe yield. So, this project, hopefully, will be installing the first phase of, uh, of that line between Kench Reservoir to Shuangang Reservoir, uh, to have, uh, thirty-six inch diameter in lieu of the existing twenty-four inch diameter pipe. Uh, so, that's before you tonight. The entire million-dollar funding for this is coming from ARPA funding. And the balance of eight-point-three million dollars for this project is, is gonna be five million dollar grant from EFC, and another million dollar, just under a million dollar from, through Congressman Ryan's office, uh, through EPA. So, we, we ask for your support. The board of estimate, obviously, passed it already. Water storage tank project, all the water storage tanks are being, are constructed, and, and, uh, they are being utilized. The projects are not completed yet, uh, but, uh, they're approaching the completion. Um, the snow, uh, and, uh, again, Christmas, uh, celebration, the, I'm sorry, the Christmas tree celebration was tremendous. Maria did a very thorough job with it, and her, her staff, and, uh, we're thankful for that. And, uh, it's very nice to see Middletown, uh, and the region around us come together to celebrate, because I'm sure many people are from outside the city of Middletown to come to our tree lighting ceremony. Uh, with that being said, do you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Uh, Alderman Kleiner?
Very quickly, the leaf pickup, um, there's still a lot of leaves on Cantrell and some specific areas. Are you gonna go around the city and do a cleanup, or?
Yes. The, the leaves pickup, it ceases tomorrow. So, uh, comes tomorrow, nobody should be putting anymore leaves outside. So, we, we, you know, we're gonna be going one more time around the city, as much, yes, as much as weather permitting, you know, if we don't get hit with the snowstorm or any of those events. But, which means that after the snow is gone, we'll come back and pick up. So, we're gonna continue going until we clear all the streets. But, nobody should be putting out anymore leaves, starting tomorrow. Tomorrow is their last chance.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanna mention on the resolution, um, there's just still, we're distributing like, millions of dollars of ARPA funds still. So, that's still from the American Rescue Plan. But, I know at this point, we have to designate. But, just want people to understand that was very successful legislation.
Yeah, absolutely.
It really has helped Middletown.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Police chief?
Good evening. Just a few comments this evening. Uh, as it's been said, Maria, great job. Uh, there's a lot that goes into that Christmas tree lighting and the parade. Um, but outstanding. She does a lot of, lot of work to bring it all together. And I know all of you support it, as do all the other departments. Um, but again, great job, Maria. Overnight parking, just to, to carry on with what the mayor started with that. The change that, for this to be effective, we have to have the compliance. Last thing we wanna do, as I've said before, is issue summons. Um, with the new law, the summon starts at a hundred dollars. So, people should be aware that it's gonna be costly if they're found parking around the street. Additionally, the changes with the law are, it's not just the two inches of snow falling, it's the anticipation of two inches or more of snow, or any type of ice. So, just knowing, watching the weather is gonna be very important, in addition to all the alerts that go out. Um, lastly, I have Ray Lynn. The work you and your team do, outstanding. Um, the programs you offer, outstanding. And I truly appreciate all the collaboration you have with MPD. So, thank you. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for the police chief, Alderman Kleiner?
One quick question. The spit, little, uh, speed trailer was down, uh, at the end of Woods Place, and then I think it was facing Cantrell for a while. Did, did you find out anything useful, interesting from that?
I always find out stuff. But, I don't have that data in front of me today.
I'm sure you do, but...
So, I could, I could email that to you.
Yeah, we could have that for our constituents meeting.
I'll email it to you, and then you'll have it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, chief. And Superintendent Recreation.
Um, just, can we queue up that PowerPoint? Just thank you again for, um, listening to our PowerPoint and our presentation, and your kind remarks about our department. kind remarks about our department and just want to congratulate the youth that came up earlier and spoke about our programs. That's the true statements from our youth, straight from their mouth on the strong impact that our programming makes. So, thank you to the council for all your continued support and some tax dollars well spent on our recreation programming, so thank you. And also want to note for the record, the city clerk's float is actually property of the Parks Department. So, next year, that might be cut from him, so they may just be walking next year.
Wow.
Any questions?
Any question for Ray Lynn?
Well said.
All right. Corporation Council?
I don't have anything specific to report unless anybody's got any questions.
Any question for our Corporation Council? All right, thank you. And City Clerk?
Please anticipate a budget transfer for next year to fund a float if the Parks Department is not going to support it. And there's also the City Clerk and the Finance Department float, so, but thank you, Maria, for an amazing job. I know everybody had a great time that night and Ray Lynn, and congratulations to you and your department on your presentation this evening, the stuff that you do for this community is absolutely extraordinary. Scarlett was at the ice skating rink, I'm sure, at six o'clock this evening and she might still be there, so thank you. That's it.
Any question for the City Clerk? All right. Reports of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
A couple things. One, this council has a lot to be proud of, of our people that we have and our department heads and all the staff that's under them. We're doing so many things in the city of Middletown and tonight, we listened to and heard from a number of them. Ray Lynn, Maria, thank you for everything that was done over this past week and it's going to be done through the holiday season. And obviously, we've got holidays coming up. I hope everyone takes care of themselves and is safe. I wasn't going to say anything, but well, I am going to say something, but first, I'm going to implore our great council president to please give a lot of consideration into amending our agenda.
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
All right.
And do what Orange County does and I know a few other communities to start out with allowing the public to speak on agenda items first and at the end of the meeting, non-agenda items. This is getting to the point of being ridiculous and I'm hoping our council president will give a lot of consideration. I know, I hate to repeat what the mayor said, but I wrote down Monroe, Newburgh, Warwick, Orange County and Bloomingburg, people who came here and spoke and they certainly have a right to come here and speak. And I think I said at the last meeting, I was wondering if you people go to your Monroe Board, your town or your city of Newburgh, your Warwick, your Orange County and Bloomingburg and not one person, and once again, maybe they did, but not one person came up here and said, "Oh, by the way, I was at the Newburgh meeting and I asked them to do the same thing." I do believe it's because of those cameras. And I think you enjoy that. You don't have to shake your finger at me. I'm hoping that you'll be respectful enough. We've spoken. You can keep coming to these meetings. I just hope the council president will change it around. I looked up the meaning of insanity and it's doing the same thing over and over and over again and looking for a different result. You can keep coming, you're not going to get a different result. We've said what we wanted to say, we listened to you, now you have to listen to us. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. We had a Recreation and Parks Committee meeting where superintendent presented the year in review for the Recreation and Parks Department. It was wonderful. I appreciate it. We were sort of wrapping things up quickly, so I didn't say anything. You, Nicole, Salinas and Kelly, just a wonderful job that you do. And when you're showing your staff up there, you see so many people who have Middletown connections, who either came, like you, that came up through the program. You know, Kelly graduated from Middletown, you know, and it was just, I don't know, I remember when, when my daughter was, you know, four or five or whatever it was and we did the little people playtime and Chris Brinkerhoff said, you know, "All the kids who we have who work here are all good kids." Everybody, doesn't necessarily mean they're all straight A students, but they're all good kids and they do the right thing and they set a good example for our kids. And this is, you know, however many years ago that was, and then she had a chance and took that to heart and got to be one of those kids and worked as a counselor in the program. And there are others who were there and then I see like Isaac. Isaac went to Middletown and just, it's just a tremendous job and all the volunteers and the coaches who handle these programs. I mean, it's, it's just such a wonderful thing and I'm grateful. Thank you, Miguel, for again, allowing us to do this. And I just think it's so great for people to see, like, there it is and it's, and you can see it again because it's, we videotaped this and I hope word of mouth gets people doing it. So, I just wanted to say that about that. And as far as the parade goes, what a wonderful night. It really was. And I know it's not about us, we know it's not about us, you know, but when we march, we get like a great seat to see all the fun and the smiles and everybody's having such a good time. And it was, it was great to not only see that and have, you know, such a great community event and Santa Claus coming, but, you know, my daughter and I walked back to our car and to walk down North Street and see prosperity and all this going on and buildings, our businesses, you know, filled with people. And it was just, just a great, a great thing and just, it just shows the progress in real terms, like, it's one thing for us to say it, but there it is, right there. So, thank you to everybody involved in all of that.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. I will be a little biased. Yes, there are some awesome floats, but only one vehicle brings Santa Claus. So, I think we all know which one that is. No, but that parade was amazing and the whole evening, everything from start to finish, it just runs like clockwork now and that doesn't go without an amazing support structure and amazing support staff. So, kudos to the entire bid, to Maria, to the police, to the fire, to DPW, rec and City Clerk. Certainly, you know, your float was up there. But really, I had the distinct honor of driving Joan Degnan in the parade. If anyone doesn't know, she is the widow of the late John Degnan, Mr. Middletown himself, who the park is named after. And the minute that she, we drove past the quote-unquote reviewing stand and she said, "They announced my name? Why?" You know, it really showed, it brought tears, certainly to my eye, but definitely to hers that, you know, just to see how much this city really does remember and cherish her family's legacy and what they've, what John left for us. So, it's just one of those moments where you want to sit and reflect on it and certainly that he will be missed, but that the traditions and things that he brought to us will continue. Eight meetings ago, I came here and sat down and there was a resolution on my desk that I had no idea was going to be there. No one had reached out about it, no one here had discussed it. I had a constituent reach out to me and say, "Hey, do you know something about some resolution that's going to be?" And I said, "No, there's no resolution. I read the agenda." And here we are, eight meetings later, still talking about that same resolution that I will not vote to pass. I don't, I don't agree with many of the statements in it. I'm not ashamed to say that. I think that if anyone actually read that, which I welcome you to, Raleigh-Middletown has an open Facebook page. If you click the link, it takes you to a page that the very top logo is "The Democratic Socialist of America." It is not hidden, that is where this is coming from. There are things in there that I do consider harmful to or disrespectful to one race, one group. We passed something calling for peace, calling for the release of hostages. That is what we can do, what we do here. I hear from many, many constituents, people I talk to, people I see in the streets, please change your meeting structure. I was hesitant to do it, but after tonight, I feel that it may be necessary for us to do that. There are people here who want to talk about Middletown's going-ons, Middletown's happenings and they deserve to be heard. They deserve to be heard early and they deserve to be heard before people who are residents of Orange County, residents of other communities. Yes, it's important. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you come to our city, I'm glad you, we will sit here, we listen to you, we're respectful. I don't believe any member of this board has laughed though, when somebody made a comment that I thought was very striking tonight. Regardless of how you feel about somebody's, what they're talking about, please be respectful to everyone when you're up here at this group, you know, just as we are to you sitting here, you know, taking notes on what you say. I am usually hesitant to talk on some of these more controversial issues. I feel that, you know, it doesn't really need our, my credence, my two cents all the time, but enough is enough now. We've, we've heard you. We will continue to hear you if you come, but please, city business is very important to those who I hear from every day and I hope to, you know, be able to help them out in the future. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I did at the last meeting go over how the county handles the agenda items and said that they speak on resolutions in the first part of the meeting. You have to write, sign in and sign your name and then at the end of the meeting, you can speak in other topics, but you can't repeat what someone else has said. So, that was my suggestion at the last meeting. I won't go over that any more than that. Christmas parade was amazing and it's just become such an institution in Middletown. So, thank you, Maria, and thank you for the bid and everyone involved. It's, it's just a tremendous effort and a tremendous community event and no matter how cold it gets, I mean, the wind wasn't as bad as last year, so, but it was cold. But it's just, everyone's having a good time, so I thank everyone for that. And Ray Lynn, I don't ever want to hear, "There's nothing for people to do, there's nothing for kids to do." It's, and I know from going to the Parks and Recreation Meetings, just how much is done and how much your staff does and it's truly amazing. And I'm really glad to see the two young men who were here in the boxing program. I remember when Roland Leibolt was on the commission and he was really concerned about boxing and introducing that and I wasn't, so I'm glad it's been really, really successful. And, and they're a great testament to the coach and how it's been done. The Warming Station opened on November 24th. They have been at capacity, it's been cold out. They need thermal underwear and non-dairy creamers. They always need coffee. And you can go to middletownwarmingstation.com and a site that Andrew keeps up. Thank you, Andrew. And you can find links to if you want to volunteer or bring a meal or where to, if you want to contribute. Our constituents meeting will be next Monday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. I thank also the garden lovers. It was a cold but very nice ceremony today, dedicating the bench and it's a beautiful bench and it's right there on the edge of Airway Park and you'll see it, but I thank them very much and they did celebrate their 100 years this year and it's terrific. I do support good cause eviction and I hope we come up with something soon that we can work on, but we can implement in Middletown. Mulberry House Senior Center on Thursday, December 12th, is celebrating their 70th anniversary. So, I will be there and congratulations to them. I saw that the Times Herald Record once again had, "See how much gas prices have risen," even though they've gone from like $3.80 down to $2.80. But gee, on the busiest travel day of the year, they spiked up three cents, so there is the big headline, "See how much gas prices have risen." We used to have a real newspaper in Middletown. And I think other than that, I would just remind people that this Saturday is December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, and it is a day that lives in infamy for those of us who never stopped hearing about it when we were younger. And it's, it's something we should never forget. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. It's now 10:00 PM and I've noticed most of the people who came to this meeting are already gone and have gone home because they don't want to stay any longer. We are just about to get to real city business now. And I have had 11 messages during this meeting from constituents who have tuned out and are furious and have had enough. This is their meeting. This is for them. Like last week, the last meeting when we passed our city budget, that is the money that Middletown can control how it is spent. And we do. But the people who live here want to know how we're doing that and they can't get that information when they're tuned out because they need to go to sleep. And frankly, so do the rest of us. I absolutely and wholeheartedly support changing our agenda to the end of the meeting with this public comment that does not include city business. It's unfair to the residents who live here who tune into this meeting so that they can get that information or so that they can come to the podium and speak about the city that they live in and that they're proud of. And they shouldn't have to wait 90 minutes for the rest of Orange County to work their way through first. It's just not fair and it's not right. And I think we should model ourselves, as Alderman Kleiner spoke about, on the county's model, where you may speak to other business at the end of the meeting and it is not to be repetitive. We are not going to keep beating the same drum for 90 minutes. If there's something to say, you can say it, but when you're done, we're not repeating it. It's been said. We have work to do here that affects the day-to-day lives of the people who live here in Middletown. That's the job we're here to do. We're not the federal government. I also would be curious if anyone would stick around for the public comment at the end? If we shut the cameras off at that point, when the city business was done and the cameras went off, would anybody even still be here? I would say probably not. On to city business. Tree lighting, my favorite night in Middletown, my favorite night in any town actually, because nobody does that night like Middletown. My kids have marched in that parade their entire lives with their sports and their school programs and whatever, or with me if they're too little. My favorite night. I work in the school, I went to school yesterday and the kids were nuts. It was so great. I got to see, I mean, it's just such a joy-filled evening for us as a community. And everyone's out and every employee here, our police department, fire, everyone who works here is out as a part of it. It's such a celebration of who we are as a community. I absolutely love it. Maria, everybody involved, so great. I can't say enough about it. It's my favorite night of the year. That being said, I don't want to keep it going on forever tonight, so I'm just going to call it.
Alderman Johnson?
Well, I do want to keep it going on forever, so, so many thoughts, so little time. Where to begin? Oh, tree lighting. Who put the Merry and Merry Christmas? Maria and Company did. Thank you so much for that. It's, it's a great experience. Rec Department, thank you. I learned two things about the rec department tonight. One, you're the mayor's favorite department.
Yes.
Oh, is Jacob here? No, he's not. And the other is that you have the best float.
Yes.
So, this is a teachable moment for me. The Rail Commons, as somebody who sat on the committee eons ago and has certainly had its little trips and hiccups along the way, it's nice to see it reconstituted and I hope it will do well. The Gaza Group. You know, there's a saying that perception is reality and I'm entitled to my own perception. When I listen for eight weeks to the Gaza Group, three adjectives come to my mind. Self-righteous, definition, characterized by a certainty, especially an unfounded one, that one is totally correct or morally superior. Condescending, definition, presenting oneself with a patronizing and superior attitude. It's too bad the ones that fit the best have already left the building. And particularly with this constant thread of the federal money could feed the homeless in Middletown, the adjective that comes to my mind is disingenuous. Definition, giving a false appearance of simple frank Definition, giving a false appearance of simple frankness, i.e. calculating. I'm entitled to my perception. Now, I am a Gemini, and I know that it's very difficult to work with. You can ask the mayor or Google it. With respect to this agenda change, I don't really want to be bullied by people who come in here and talk for an hour. As far as I'm concerned, you can talk for three hours. And I'm not denying the rights of our citizens to hear the business of this city, but I also don't want to be bullied into changing my agenda to accommodate your lack of consideration for what we're trying to accomplish here. I will defer to the president and to my colleagues, but I don't want to be bullied and I don't care for it. But I appreciate the remarks of the mayor and my colleagues and Mr. Colley in particular. Mr. Massey talked about the definition of insanity. So let's talk about the strategy of the leadership of this group. This group proudly states, this is our eighth meeting that we've come to talk to the council. Well, another gentleman talked about being in sales and the strategies to be in sales. So if you really want to move your cause forward, I ask you to ask your leadership, why am I coming to the same group of nine people for two months when I could have spoken to 12 or 14 or 16 groups of people on different nights and different weeks? You want the domino effect? Well, put up the domino so they can be knocked down. Give me a break. I'm not done. Good Cause. Apparently, the mayor and counselor and I have reviewed some documents, one over the signature of Mr. Blumenthal, which is a red-letter document, which also reminds me if I got to go to law school and I read that document, and also with Mr. Guzman. And we'll be, Good Cause is alive and well. I appreciate your efforts in the beginning. For those of you who keep reminding us, we are well reminded. It's not as simple as it looks. We understand the difference between the identity of the one unit versus 10, and we understand the sleight of hand of LLCs that try to be where they're not and nobody knows where they are. We get the idea of 78% versus 37%. Most of my numbers are moderately correct. So we're alive and well in dealing with that, and fortunately for you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Alden Tobin?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a teacher, so I get up at 6 o'clock. I go to bed at 10:00, so I'm very tired. I'm starting to lose focus here. But I do tell my students and I talk to other people to be respectful, like the guy I mentioned in sales, you got to listen to other people's opinions, listen before you speak, and also to be respectful, because once you start insulting them and yelling at them, then no one's listening to you. And that's why I do bring point of order or objective if people start insulting us, calling us less than human or evil. I mean, we don't want to turn this, you know, this government meeting into a circus and start calling people back and forth. So I did see some improvement from last time. I thought the last meeting, people were cursing and it was getting a little violent, so I'm glad that maybe, you know, people are taking that into consideration. But, you know, if you start insulting people, they're not going to listen to you. I do support Good Cause eviction protections. City business also, I mean, Alden Witt, thank you, and the recs department, you did such a great job. I wasn't aware of even half the things that you were doing, and I follow everything on Facebook and I get all the emails. We have so many programs for our youth. We have 20 parks in the city. Most are walkable to every resident. There's green spaces everywhere. There's slides, there's swings. We have specialty parks. We have a skate park, a dog park. We have sports fields, trails, which is makes Middletown a great place to live, a healthy community and a family-friendly community by design, but also investment by the city. So I'm glad to be a part of that. Since I've been on the council, I think we've created three new facilities, so glad to be a part of that. We also see we have bike stores opening up and now a running store. So, you know, they know they want to be here because they see what we're investing in our communities. So I'd like to thank everybody for that, the Parks Department, the Rec Department. Maria, great parade. You know, I know we're there, we're in front, we're waiting people, but they're not there to see us, they're there to see Santa, so, but there's so many kids smiling at the end of day, getting the community involved. It was a great night and always makes me feel proud to be someone from Middletown, to live in Middletown, and that's it.
Okay, parade, echo on everybody with the great job. Every time I leave my house, it's always Middletown first and be nice. My wife tells me that every night, every day. Be nice and it's Middletown first. I have to be nice. So I hear, and I hope the people that are still here can listen. They don't say, but you have to listen to what the council members are saying. It's it's long. Folks, I'm probably the last one here. We used to go to midnight for four years, our midnight, we used to go to midnight. I don't want to do that. Oh, Alex, he was deputy mayor at that time. He was here, and we would fight and argue. The comments, for the good of the city, has never been changed in our agenda. It's been here. We changed it. We alter our agenda two or three times, but we never changed it. And now we have at least four, maybe five councilmen asking, plus the mayor, not to hijack. Go to your own town. Go to the town of Chester, the village of Chester, and see if that goes well. And you start attacking their elected officials and your parents, and everybody has to drive through that town. See how that works. We open for the good of the city to let people talk and voice your opinion and keep it three minutes. I'm asking again, and I'll reach out to the group. We really need to consider, I think the council has spoken for the eighth or ninth or 10th time and whatever we have, before we have to change the agenda to appease everybody. We work together. We sit here for Middletown first. I will always be here for Middletown first, and it's not going to go away. And I'll try to be nice every night. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing the acceptance of the stop DWI funding for a third period.
Resolution filed by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Hi.
Jean Francois? I'm sorry. I'm here. It's been a long day. Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing the transfer of funds within the 2024 water treatment plant for chemicals.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alvin Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing to enter into an agreement with the county of Orange for the 2024-2025 Stop DWI High Visibility Engagement Enforcement Crackdown Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing the approval of the final obligation of unspent ARPA funds.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alvin Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing a budget transfer of $110,000 from within the 2024 Paramount budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the transfer of $6,000 within the fire department's 2024 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the transfer of $6,000 within the fire department's 2024 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray denying a request for a subdivision in Orange Terrace.
Seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Alvin Kleiner?
Yeah, I'm going to support what the mayor is asking for on this, but I just do want to correct some misinformation as presented. This called for four lots, not six lots, and it was approved, variance was approved by the ZBA. What I haven't, and so that they are allowed the four lots. Other questions, what I, I don't like the last-minute changes on the plan, and I never heard really from the planning board why they disapproved of it, because they sent it to us with a negative recommendation. And I know that the board chairman voted for it, voted in favor of it, but so I'm supporting it, resolution, but with some reservations. Thank you.
Alvin Johnson?
I'm going to defer to Alderman Ray. Should she care to speak first for the third ward?
No, go right ahead.
Well, I guess I wasn't done. So this whole process, I will refer to as a shell game. It was six, and it was four, and it was three, and it was at this venue, and then that venue, and the other venue. This is not just an affront to the city, it's not just an affront to the third ward, it's an affront to the city of Middletown to be manipulated like this. That's my word, shell game, my word. I'm using it. I own it. I'm proud of it. Canard. Hmm. I would say council was quite spirited this evening. Maybe he was a litigator in a former life, I don't know. He used canard three times because words are his tools, apparently, but he also used the word mob rule. Would the three of you stand up because you're now a mob? Thank you very much. The mob is right there. Mob rule, really? You know what? I should not stay here past 10 o'clock. 11 feet, 4 feet, 12 feet, three houses, six houses, two houses. To say that it does, it obviously changes the character of the neighborhood. Now, if somebody wants to say that's a good thing, have at it. Most people who look at it would say it's a bad thing. And Alderman Ray and I represent the mob, apparently, and the mob does not feel that enhances their quality of life or their community or that reinforces all the reasons that they live where they live and they did what they did. And certainly, those of us who represent the third ward would be very happy to see this denied in some way. Thank you.
Alvin Ray?
Hey, you mob, settle down.
I love letting Paul speak first because he does such a great job. But yeah, as for our mob who was told that they should have gotten gotten their variance, they did try. They were told, no, the code is the code. Follow it. And if that means you have to turn your two lots into one, that's what you have to do. That's what they were told. And now we're being presented with this attitude of it's just a couple of feet. Oh, it's just a few changes. Oh, it's just a little this, it's just a little retaining wall, and everything is just whatever, whatever, whatever. Well, I don't believe that that's why we have a city code, because what's the point? If everything is just, it's just a little off, don't worry about it. No, that is there to protect our citizens, their quality of life and the quality of our city. And our residents spoke. They were not heard by the ZBA. I feel like they may have been heard by the planning board. We have a negative recommendation from them. We have a plan that seems to be under constant fluctuation changes, and I absolutely think that we should, as a board, support this resolution. I'm done.
Okay, anyone else? Just for the record, I'll be abstaining. This person that owned these lots reached out to me last October and asked me to sell them, so I will be abstaining from the vote. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered and the claims to be adjusted and the city treasury be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move for adjournment.